Afternoon, the council will return to order. Will you please call roll, Carla?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Okay, item 344, please.
Appeal of David Venadia and Gwen Simel against the noise variance granted to Anderson Construction for the Block 17 construction site located at 1315 Northwest 11th Avenue.
Okay, welcome everyone. We'll start with a staff report. And we'll follow the usual hearing procedure in which we have a staff report, many guidance from our city attorney, the appellant, supporters of the opponent of the appeal, and supporters of the opposition to the appeal rebuttal and discussion and decision. So with that, Mr. Van Orden, take it away.
Thank you, members of the city council. I'm Paul Van Orden, the city's noise control officer within the office of neighborhood involvement. Members of the city council, we're here today to review an appeal of a construction noise variance for Anderson Construction for noise variance number 355-862201. This particular project related to four dates in the variance for pouring concrete starting as early as 5:00 a.m. on the project that's commonly known as Block 17. The project is bordered by Northwest 11th, 12th avenues in Northwest Overton and Pettigrove. An additional three dates of variance under the application that we approved included dates for demobilization and erection of a tower crane. With the delivery of equipment to make that operation happen could potentially start as early as 5:00, but the actual crane erection and demobilization wouldn't start until 6:00 a.m. In review of the application, the noise control office was directed by the governing body, the Noise Review Board, to first vet all construction projects that might normally be dealt with in-house by staff first through the Noise Review Board for consideration. At the January Noise Review Board meeting, the board members discussed the variance and the chair, David Sweet, delegated the variance back to staff based on the size of the variance was not one that necessitated the full board to review the variance. And within their review and delegation back to the noise control officer, they did offer specific recommendations. In their discussion, they encouraged the noise control officer to place limitations on weekend work for the early concrete pours and to also limit quieter crane work from happening on Sundays. The noise control office limited the crane pours to Tuesday through Friday unless the contractor could show a clear need with the predicted weather that week to require the pour on a Monday. So our limitations were not just on weekends, but we also placed limitations on a Monday at request during the hearing from the public. And in direct response to the appellant, Mr. Venadia's request for exploring Mondays as an additional date to place limitations. The noise office also reported in our last meeting before council that we would in general be looking to find reasonable limits to place on construction work in the city when we had a situation where there was aggregation of many construction projects happening. And so that came into account in placing these limitations in this particular area. The noise office previously supported the city council in approving an appeal from the appellant, David Venadia, on a separate project by Anderson Construction. In this case, we're asking city council to deny this appeal that's before you today. There are two, but the one that we're talking about first. The noise office has several points to offer as to why the denial is a reasonable denial. The project was first vetted through the Noise Review Board to see if the proposed early morning work was of a significant impact on the community to require a review and a decision by the full board. The board delegated the short-term variance request back to staff, complete with suggestions to help offer some respite on the weekend to the public. Two, there were no complaints from the public on these two projects since the noise office and the Noise Review Board started placing a tighter watch on work in the Pearl. In particular, to check our progress, the noise office called concerned citizens in the Pearl, reaching out to 25 citizens whose phone numbers we had, who've been vocal recently on area construction. Most of their initial interest in construction in the Pearl had been pile drivers, but we still reached out to them. Eight were reached live and only one had trepidation in general about construction noise in the Pearl. Twelve received voicemails to call back to discuss construction noise and also to notify them of our work on the pile driver effort that's continuing tonight with the Noise Review Board. None called back. Five additional callers either had their numbers disconnected, had no voicemail, or we had a wrong number. No one had general concerns about early morning work to share and no one commented on the two variances being appealed today. We did call and leave a voicemail for Mr. Venadia and we also called his partner Gwen Simel, who I talked with personally. The third issue, the police bureau's effort through Assistant Chief Day to look at noise calls more closely as requested by council, has not documented a pattern of community complaints to dispatch on the noise projects happening in the Pearl and has not resulted in calls for service or documented special reports for construction noise for the noise office to examine more closely. Notification, number four, notification has been extensive on these two variances. In particular, with the project on Anderson, they actually delivered just under 1,000 notices to neighboring residential towers, supplying those to the building managers. An additional notice after we approved the variance was given to the building managers, in this case, not 1,000 notices, but individual notices to post in each building with the variance conditions and the variance approval. And number five, the Noise Review Board has respectfully modified its planned code changes in 2014 and 2015, in which they were looking to address garbage truck noise and has switched gears to focus on preparing this set of recommendations for council on pile driver noise in the Pearl. And in that effort, they have a meeting tonight to help finalize those recommendations, but that will not only include the pile driver recommendations, there are a few policy changes and code improvements that should offer some respite to folks in the Pearl regarding construction noise in the Pearl. So although the project's primarily focused on pile driving, they'll be recommending changing EX zoning in the noise code to a commercial classification, which is planned to happen as part of the comp plan mixed use zones process within the next few years anyway. And they are also looking at a defined concept within their policies and procedures for a noise impact zone that when we have challenges where there's an aggregation of projects, and in this case, it wouldn't only be construction, it might also be concerts or other things, that the board would be responsive and limit issuing noise variances as openly as they might in an area that doesn't have that particular impact. And those are our main points for the appeal.
Okay, great. Questions, Mr. Paul? All right, then let's proceed on in the process. And Mr. Venadia, come on up. Ben, do you have any other guidance for us before we get further into this process?
I would just remind the council that the appeal is in the nature of a quasi judicial proceeding.
Right.
Where you're determining the, a request for a variance from a particular applicant and the determination of the noise board and then the appeal of Mr. Venadia. And if there's a proposal to, which seems to be on the table from Mr. Venadia, to adopt a restriction that is outside the bounds of this particular application, that would be in the nature of a legislative determination, which would not be proper in this particular proceeding, just as a bit of guidance in this particular setting.
Okay, thank you. Afternoon.
Hello.
Put your name in the record, David.
My name is David Venadia, Pearl District resident. And we were coming here today hoping that you would help us. On February 19th, you appointed a noise board task force. And that noise board task force, together with us and the city, had come up with a recommendation, which was given to Chad, your assistant, or someone who works in your office. And as a result of poor planning, people in the Pearl District are being exposed to excessive noise and contaminants and damage to our livability. With regard to this particular appeal, which at this point, if you can't make a decision that actually could help us, might be moot for us to really discuss, but we have yet to determine if the noise in question in the Pearl District is subjective as it has been told to us by the noise board. This is all subjective. Proper DBA measurements have not been taken in our area despite our repeated requests over a span of months. We've requested for them to come, the noise office to come and do proper testing. They have not done that. Only one member of the noise board was present at the January 14th noise board meeting. And so there was no quorum and no vote happened when David Sweet recommended the granting of the variances for an additional nine days of out-of-the-ordinary, early morning and late evening construction activity that was to happen over the following 30 days, even after he heard in person and ongoing opposing testimony from three neighborhood residents there that night, and ongoing in-person and written testimony from over the previous few months of people who had complained about the noise. It's kind of disheartening to hear that Paul can come here and say that there are no complaints received because we know we've sent them. I've had people CC us on emails that they've sent into the noise office. And those things just disappear into the ether and it's very frustrating. We've only really begun to experience the disruptive early morning and late night activity in our neighborhood. The cash and carry is closed today, as a matter of fact. Madera Pearl will soon be built in that spot. And citizens really have no idea what kind of a situation we're going to be getting into. We don't know what the timeline is. We can't get information. You can't get information from the construction companies, from the developers, or from the city. Nobody knows and everyone refers you as someone else. It's sort of hot potato politics. Anderson Construction had scheduled three 5:00 a.m. concrete pours the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday mornings on the week of the hearing date, and none of those events happened. So when they talk about notification, yeah, we got a letter. And we always get a letter right before there's a hearing like this. In fact, notification works very well when we had a city hall, a city council meeting like we're having now. And during that time, what that shows me is that when the noise office works with the construction companies to enforce the ordinance, then companies can comply and we can actually be notified. But the rest of the time, like probably the rest of this week and the rest of this month, notification just goes right out the window because there's no more oversight. Thomas Questenberry is here from Anderson Construction. He stated on the Wednesday night meeting that the pour was scheduled for the following morning at Block 17. That never happened, so it's very hard for citizens to plan. And we realize that it's hard for construction companies to plan as well. And they've expressed to us that they need a window and that there are many conditions that affect their construction pours or their construction activity in general. And we get that. And that's why we have worked with your task force to come up with a solution that would potentially solve a lot of problems. And we wrote a long letter to you that you have in your packets, I believe, that shows that having a, as Paul mentioned, like a noise impact zone with specific criteria and specific ways to deal with that zone would really help both citizens, businesses, companies that are doing construction in the area, because there are clearly defined roles for everyone. And this would really help eliminate problems with notification. The concrete trucks that Anderson were using to do the pours were, starting with their alarms, they have these kind of alarms that kick off when they lower the back portion of the concrete truck, which they would start doing two blocks away underneath our window and then as they pass past the Parker Building and then around the corner finally over to where Block 17 is. And finally, Anderson has claimed that they've been monitoring their noise levels, but they refuse to share their findings because they claim everything they do is under legal noise limits. And so what we find as citizens, when we ask questions and when we come before a group of people like today, which is really exciting for us because we really hope that something can be done, we get a lot of kickback and we get a lot of sleight of hand and we get a lot of, put you off to that department, go talk to this person. It's very difficult to be a citizen living in that neighborhood right now. And so again, this poor planning has a couple buildings, ours in particular, has about 150 children living in it. And we're currently surrounded by construction and surrounded by contaminants and we can't get any answers. Nobody will talk to us. And it's been difficult. Garbage noise is being looked at. We've only heard about this recently. And garbage noise was looked at in 2003 when the entire city was looked at for noise. And there was a $12,000 investigation into garbage noise that said that nothing could be done about it. And so I'm surprised to hear that our problems, which are current and happening right now, are pushing garbage noise out of the way. And the changes that are proposed for the upcoming, tonight's meeting, the changes that are proposed for Title 18, the one that Paul mentioned in particular with moving the EX zoning into commercial, doesn't actually affect us. It won't do anything for us in the Pearl because the residents are also still in EX zoning and so the decibel levels actually remain exactly the same. So it looks like something's being done and it sounds nice when you talk about it, but in reality, it won't protect us at all in any bitter fashion.
I'm Gwen Simel and I wanted to address just one point that Paul made, that there were no complaints for this particular project, Block 17. And while that may be true for sound, I don't know if that was true. I was in contact with the DEQ about the huge piles of contaminated soil that they had left out uncovered for five months until I started talking to them. I emailed Amanda about this when I started to try and get in touch with someone. So I was trying to sort of bring, you know, different government parties together. So even if this company is maybe not doing something wrong with regards to noise, which I'm not sure that I'm convinced of, you know, they have other things that they're not complying with. Like the DEQ did send them a warning about it. I had to poke the DEQ again to get that soil removed. It is soil that is known to have an unacceptable risk of cancer associated with it. And it was left out uncovered during our very dry and, you know, warm last couple of months when we had our windows open. We have a preschool in our building that uses the playground that is coated in this stuff. The kids come in with their hands covered in black dust that we know is contaminated. And we can't get answers about it. No one will come and test the dust. Do you have any idea? No. Anyway, the point is that Block 17 may or may not have had complaints about noise, but they had complaints about other things that they were doing wrong. And there is very little enforcement going on and oversight going on for these projects. And it's damaging livability. It has damaged, destroyed, livability in our neighborhood.
And two months ago, you, again, you put together a task force and that task force recommended that we come to city council, and this is what Chad encouraged us to come before city council and ask you directly for help. And we were, in that letter, outlined this idea of having a noise impact zone that would then offset the weekends so that we could have a livable weekend in the neighborhood or in neighborhoods around Portland. And so the noise task force, which was Mary Helen, who is not able to be a noise task force anymore, had recommended a 90-day trial. And we feel that that's a really valid form of research that we hope could be instituted.
So I really appreciate your work and your concerns. This appeal is about the variance. So could you just tell me what about the variance are you appealing? What are you not in agreement with on the variance?
Well, in the letter that I wrote, I said that at this point, the construction activity has already been carried out. And so really, having this city council meeting, if we were going to try to retroactively enable, enact the stipulations that I had originally requested was a waste of time for everybody. And so since we're here now, all of us are here, maybe we can discuss some form of, I guess we can't though.
No, that's a legislative process. There's a way that it goes through the noise board and they bring recommendations to us. We have to rule on the appeal.
Okay, Amanda, I understand that, but it does feel like one more delaying tactic. As citizens who have been asking for months for help, it feels like one more delaying tactic. I get that you have your rules, but I just want you to know how it appears to us.
And I've also, I asked for a change in the appeal, so with regard to how to deal with this situation. But I guess if, yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, all right. Questions? Thank you both, appreciate it. We'll see if there's, is there anyone speaking opposition to the appeal?
Do you want to go now?
Okay.
We have Joel Anderson and Tiffany Switzer.
I happened to go to lunch with this guy today. Didn't know he was coming here, so.
Short desk here, sorry.
So after listening to a couple of our residents, I thought I'd speak as well, but.
Okay, put your name in the record, though.
Can I go last? I'll let Joel go first, thank you.
Joel Anderson with Anderson Construction Company. I do want to say first and foremost that I'm very sympathetic and apologize to Mr. Veneta and his partner, because I grew up in the city. I've lived here my whole life. I've been around construction. I know that it does make noise and cause dust and debris and it is the unfortunate price of progress. I lived at the Portland Towers. My window looked out at the Civic Stadium at the time, when in the late 90s, the Old Noma Athletic Club started an expansion to their campus. And I woke up every morning to the pile driver. And today, I use that facility with my children and it was an unfortunate price to pay, you know, to an 18-year-old, but you know, it was part of what happens. And it doesn't make it easy. Construction is by its very nature a risky endeavor. And our concern that we have for the citizens, you know, I'll tell you, I don't mind speaking here and dealing with the complaints because 15 years ago, the Pearl District was nothing. And today, that we have such great citizens that want to live there and are concerned about what's happening is really a tremendous sign of progress that our cities had. That has all come at the same way. We've pile driven in every site down there. We've dug holes. We've moved the contaminated soils. We've done it all in the process and at the price of this progress. And our main concern has always been safety. Our core values at our company dictate that we do it safely. And that's not just to our workers, but also to the greater audience that we deal with in the community and the public that surrounds us. Our core value also says that we take responsibility. So if we've done something wrong and erred, we have no problem taking ownership of that. But as it stands, and my understanding of the issues here, is that it's not convenient, but that we haven't violated anything in the process. That when we do have trucks come early, we have long pour days, so we have them come earlier in the morning because we can only pour, we can only get so much mud down, concrete down, in a certain period of time. We can start it early or we can start it late. The earlier we start, the lower impact that it has on the traffic to the community. That's why we start early. The price of that, though, unfortunately, is that it creates a noise issue to the surrounding residents. And there's not much that can be done about that. As far as the tower crane's erection and dismantling, the big concern that we have there is public safety. As in, if any of you have ever watched a tower crane being erected or dismantled, it is hands down the most risky endeavor in all of the construction process. And to propose to not do that on the weekend, the reason we do it on Sunday in specifics is because it's the lowest overall impact to a given area, primarily for traffic reasons. Because we're trying to avoid a global impact or a local impact to all of the vehicular traffic, but also realizing that Pearl in particular has a high population of pedestrian and foot traffic around. And certainly, everybody likes to stop and see the tower cranes being erected. But doing it on a weekend is in more of a controlled environment than having to do it during the week. It's not just because it saves us from a workday, right? Nope. I'm the employer. The last thing I want is for my employees to have to work on a Saturday and Sunday. It makes me feel really bad that they have to do that. And I've done that in my career as well. But it's also, it's a necessity to ensure that the public safety is met throughout the process. And that's really what's at the core of this, is that it is not always going to be convenient for construction, period. It won't be. But convenience is superseded by safety. And that's what these issues are really driven around, that it is, there are things, could we do better as industry? For sure. Are we doing the best that we can? I really think we are. We have a great team of people on all of our projects. We have a large contingent of projects that happen to be touching each other. And there's another project that's being built, kind of kitty corner from one of our sites. And it's a big conflux right down there, right now. And then the cash and carry site's about to go too. That's going to put a big impact on the community. And in two years, that'll all be behind. And maybe there'll be more projects, hopefully, that we'll be building. But if not, the community will be back to, you know, living and there'll be all the more residents down there. But for the time being, you know, we're left with very few options, but our primary focus is on safety. And we can't and will not compromise on that issue, particularly as it relates to the public and our own workers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I just drafted down some notes.
Put your name in the record.
Oh, sorry, mayor. Tiffany Switzer, Hoyt Street Properties. Commissioner Fritz, you mentioned that we're talking just about this appeal today and I realize that, so I'm going to try and stay on point. Couple of things I heard, though, and I want to give some history. This is actually my 14th building in the Pearl District. And we have built Hoyt Street Properties, every building by pile. And yes, it has been noisy and it's been disruptive and dusty and we've had environmental issues. And our homeowners, residents, people living in the area, which is quite a mix of all groups, luckily have moved there and helped create one of the most successful neighborhoods that we have in the country. I'm so happy we're building again. You know, anybody moving into the neighborhood, particularly some of the residents that you just heard from, could look out and see that there are eight or nine vacant blocks and maybe think that there might be some construction coming someday. We've had the last seven years of not having anything going on, unfortunately. And to have Anderson as our builder on two of our projects right next door, yes, it is disruptive, but we will get through it. And the sooner the 30 to 40 days it takes of pile driving and noise and disruption, we're done with it, of the two years of building. As far as notification, I have to speak to that because I think particularly Hoyt Street Properties probably notifies more people than they even have to, given that from Hoyt to hopefully the Fremont Bridge someday, most of those buildings are ours. We notify every building. It either goes up in the elevator or it goes down by the trash room. Some notification to say there's a project coming, what's going to be happening. We have the same property management company for all of our buildings, so there's one voice speaking for all of the buildings. Each site is posted. On top of that, we have a Hoyt Yards Community Association, which is a separate neighborhood association that every homeowner living in Hoyt belongs to and contributes to financially. That group, of which I am a part of, meets annually, but they also can meet monthly to talk about these issues. Every building can belong to it, including whether they are a rental, an affordable building, or a for-sale building. So to say there hasn't been proper communication, there has been and there always has been and there will continue to be. Anderson has gone above and beyond that. They have a website. They have somebody you can call into to complain. In fact, it got so bad that from about 10 people, that we chose not to do that on our current project that Anderson is also building. As far as, I just want to touch on this because it is important. As far as contamination, we have a record of decision that was put in place almost 20 years ago with Burlington Northern and DEQ. We have to follow the rules of that record of decision. We have to follow that with DEQ. And they sign off on every project that we build. The dirt that was described today, yes. Because we did not do pile driving on our most recent project, we did. Because we did not do pile-driving on our most recent project, we did auger drilling, which is something we tried. It cost us $430,000 more, and 40 days we lost off the schedule, but we wanted to try it, not because of noise, because we were told that would be an alternative method. We had to pile dirt, let it dry out, which was all approved by DEQ, and yes, there were times where it was not covered. We had a few windstorms, and it got uncovered, and then we recovered it. Once we were able to transport it and truck it out, we did that. There is no longer any dirt there, because DEQ doesn't allow us to keep the dirt there. So, you know, I just wanted to be clear on some of the things that you heard today. The development community is just now getting involved in this. Because there hasn't been proper notification, that's fine. I've now notified a whole host of people to say, this is an issue that I'd like you to speak on, starting tonight at the last of the Noise Committee, and then unfortunately, it's coming to you to make an ultimate decision on Saturdays and reduced hours and a whole host of other things that you will hear us all speak on. So I hope you will listen. I hope you all understand that this is progress. It's for a short period of time. We don't want to extend the time. We want to get the construction over with as much as anybody else. So, I'm just hot talking to you guys today, but I appreciate you listening, and thanks.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the appeal? Okay, Mr. Venadia, you want to rebuttal? Come on up.
It's interesting, in the past year, I've been really closely involved with all this, and so to hear the, one of the main people from Anderson saying that, you know, the reason that they, the reasons why they do the things they do, the person on the street from Anderson tells me that they do the pours in the mornings so that they can have time to do them, and so it's about them. He's talking about really being concerned with safety, and yet, if a crane jump is the most dangerous thing, why would you want to do that on a weekend in the Pearl District, when people are there to shop and go into the parks and be on the street, that they would actually stop and take a look? And what's more is, block the streets off, then, so that people aren't in danger. What's more is, you know, we had another appeal where Anderson Construction, a representative from Anderson, said, "We don't want to work on Sundays. I don't want to work on Sundays. I'm not going to work on Sundays." We just had that as a reserve, and so they had got a variance with a reserve for Sundays in case they possibly needed it. And so they gave up Sundays, so they don't have any problems with giving up Sundays, because they never planned to use them. This whole idea of, it's just temporary, it's just two years, and then that's all behind you. Well, I've been living in the Pearl for years, and it started with the streetcar construction in 2010. We moved over to the Ramona Apartments from where we were to actually escape some of the construction. And yeah, we knew that eventually it would catch up to us, and we're not against progress by any means. We're thrilled with the way the city is developing and growing. There's a lot of exciting things happening. What we are and have always been working towards and working, trying to work with the city about, is unlawful construction work. That is, construction work that happens outside of the variance, excuse me, outside of ordinance hours. And so if Anderson's primary concern is safety, I have to say, then, why would they, why would people plan to put two family-centric houses in the center of brownfields? If their primary concern is safety, why would they leave contaminated dirt upwind, uncovered from a playground where children play every single day? The Record of Decision also says that the entire brownfields of Hoyt Street Properties should be capped by now. The anticipated idea of how the Pearl would be in 2015 was that it would be done. And we realized that there was a lag in time, when people didn't have enough money, and there wasn't, nothing was happening. And so there was a time in there where the development didn't happen. But that doesn't mean that because of finances, that children should be put at risk, and that's what's happening right now.
I just wanted to add, it's Gwen Semel. These two lovely people who came up to share with you, I don't think they're acknowledging that this is eight sites. Some of them are staging sites and parking sites, but it's eight sites that are active right now, six of them in brownfields. There's a difference between one site maybe being a little lax and following the rules, and eight sites doing that sort of thing. That has a whole other level, and again, that's what we're trying to say. We're not against construction, we just want it done in a livable manner, and when there are eight active construction sites, you got to work to make that happen.
And when citizens express themselves or give feedback to construction companies, the city has set it up that this is a complaint-driven system. So for us to come forward means we're complainers, and that just puts us into a negative light immediately. It's a very difficult place to be in. And to bring information, which is feedback, to developers and construction companies and city planners, would actually, even if you called it something different, information, we're informing you that things are either working or not working. And while they're not working, let's make improvements. And the two-year thing, you know, we had, the parker went up, and that took a little bit over two years, of people working seven days a week. And now we have cash-and-carry going up right next door, and that's going to take, hmm, maybe a little over two years, of people maybe perhaps working seven days a week. So now we're talking about a four-year project. And yeah, we do have more areas near us that are not developed, and are brownfields, and are just dirt and dust that are being kicked up. So are we safe living there? Nobody can answer that question.
And it's not just going to be for two years, it's going to be longer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further questions or discussions from council? Is there a motion?
Well, this is a noise variance appeal, and I think there's now in the record that the issue is moot, so.
Still have to dispose of the appeal, though, don't we?
So is the motion to deny the appeal?
Yes.
So I move to deny the appeal.
Okay, okay. Further discussion? So roll call on that decision, please.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
There's a process in play in moving forward with looking at the rules, excuse me, are the rules the right rules? Should they be changed? Should the processes be changed? That, I understand, is underway at the Noise Review Board. So that's the opportunity, and in your appeal, you talk about an opportunity for citizens to come in and figure things out. That's the process to do that. So if you then disagree with the recommendation of the Noise Board, that's the time to come back when the regularly scheduled hearing is made with others to discuss what you'd like us to do differently. But the quasi-judicial process of appealing variances must, by law, focus on what's the matter with the variance. Now, when I'm looking at the variance, I can see your point, that 6:00 AM does seem unreasonable for active, noisy construction, and that's something that I hope that the Noise Review Board is considering. I think it's reasonable for them to look at restricting the operation of pile-drivers to 8:00 to 5:00 on Monday through Friday. Not quite sure why Monday morning is different from any other morning than it's Monday morning, but, you know, those are things that this legislative process is going to deal with and can be looking at your livable weekends concept. I do urge the Noise Review Board to be careful about expanding the noise rules on EX zones to make them like commercial zones. EX in the Pearl is very different from EX in the Central East Side. And we don't know yet what the Planning Bureau and the Planning Sustainability Commission's going to bring forward in terms of these new mixed-use zones. Let's not inadvertently mess things up in the Central East Side, as we're trying to fix some of these problems in the Pearl and in some of the more residential areas. In fact, the EX zone itself, I think, has some particular challenges that I'm not sure are being adequately noodled through by, in the review process, because I haven't heard what that proposal is yet. So definitely, you're raising some great concerns. This isn't the venue to do it, though. The appeal of the noise variance is specifically, what's the matter with that variance in terms of it, how, why should it not have been approved? And I think that the way it's written out, with four variances over a course of several months, is not unreasonable if the details had been better. But since it's now, the pours have been done, the noise is done, it's moot, and that's why I'm supporting denying the appeal. Aye.
Hales?
Yeah, I may misunderstand this, but in terms of the work that's going to be done tonight on potential changes in the regulations, the classification of the zone, which is, it is zoned to EX, but right now, EX is classified as industrial, right? And so classing it as commercial means that residents will get a more deferential approach to noise than they do now.
That's the problem in the Pearl, I mean, in the Central East Side.
Right.
Because it really is industrial. EX is industrial in Central East Side.
Right, so we may, you're right, we may have to figure that out. But for the short term, in the Pearl, life will be better if it's classified as commercial instead of industrial. I think, maybe I've got that wrong, but that is the legislative issue, and we'll discuss that in the legislative process. I agree with your comments completely, that, you know, this process has to be, did the about, did the rules that we had in place, were they properly applied and followed? And I believe that they were, and that there's no basis for an appeal in this case. Doesn't mean that there's not a basis for a conversation about what the rules should be, but that has to be in that legislative arena, which, again, is taking place in three hours. So I vote in favor of the motion to deny the appeal. Okay, so that one is disposed of. We have a second one on the calendar here, so.
Item 345, Appeal of David Venadia, Gwen Semel, Ron and Morgan Cecil, Jim and Betty Havermayr, and Talia Harrison, against the noise variance granted to Walsh Construction for the Abigail Construction Site located at 1616 Northwest 13th Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Van Orden.
Thank you, members of the council. Paul Van Orden, the Noise Control Officer with Oney. Very similar situation here, so I may be repeating myself in many ways. We have a review of a construction noise variance for Walsh Construction. The appeal regards the approval of a noise variance by the Noise Control Officer for Walsh Construction for four dates under the approved variance for pouring concrete, starting at 5:00 AM. There were two dates that were approved by the board earlier, and then they moved the four dates under this particular appeal that we're actually looking at to the Noise Control Officer for review. That was noise variance 3569176. In the review of the application, the Noise Control Office was directed by the Noise Review Board to first, as I mentioned earlier, vet the variances through the board, and in this case, again, like the Anderson variance, they did not see a necessity for the board to review this variance, and they, the chair technically moves the variance review to the Noise Control Officer when that's the case. And at that January meeting, when the chair moved the variance to review to the Noise Control Officer, they also offered the same input for consideration of the neighbors to explore not having the concrete pours happen on the weekend, with the same type of concerns for trying to make, trying to adapt as best as possible to the weather conditions, and if the weather necessitated a pour on a Monday, which was a request we had heard at the hearing from the community, to try and limit as many days as possible, if that was possible, if that was something that the contractor could do. And so we did administer a noise variance, again, in this case, sensitive to the neighbors' requests to not have concrete pours on the weekends, and went above and beyond that and tried to explore, also limiting it on Mondays. The variance that we administered, same conditions that I was mentioning before, that the Noise Office is asking you to deny this appeal for basically the same concerns that I mentioned, the first concern being that the project and the community was delegated by the board to the Noise Control Officer and was done in a respective fashion to the concerns from the community, that there were no complaints. And let me help clarify, because I do understand Mr. Venadia's concern in the earlier appeal. When I say complaints, there were concerns raised in the review process by neighbors in terms of a handful of letters saying, "We would like to not see construction work early in the day." But in terms of what the actual noise impacts were, in our feedback we received after the projects were transpiring, we did not have complaints that the work that actually transpired impacted the community. So yes, I will agree that there were a handful of concerns at the front end that citizens said in the review process, "We'd like you not to administer a noise variance for early construction at all."
Is that because the work didn't occur as planned, or because it was quieter than anticipated?
Well, I think, I think very respectfully to the community, experiencing much of the same, not quite as dense as the Pearl, but very similar over in the Elliott Boise, that area that I live, that if you tell someone you're going to do construction work at 5:00 in the morning, I would say that any citizen would say, "Who's the knucklehead who's approving that?" And so I understand, unless you have the 19 years, the 19, 20 years I have doing this for the city, combined with the experience we have with the Noise Review Board, to try and figure out, is there an actual balance? By no means is there no impact on the community, but clearly, in the case of crane erections, which we have taken sound readings on, they're not a giant noise activity. Concrete pours, they can be a notable impact on the community, things like having trucks stage and have too many trucks in a row, having too many pumping operations happening at the same time. So I think what transpired was that the impact was not significant enough for the community to say that a handful of those dates necessitated all early morning work from not happening. So I would definitely intone that it is an impact on the community, and hopefully, one that's metered out in a respectful fashion, and I think that's what transpired in this case. The third condition we said earlier was that the Police Bureau did help us out in looking to see if there were concerns in the community. We did not get a report back that they documented concerns from calls for dispatch or special reports from officers delineating that the community members had reported a noise impact that they were able to document. The notification was a little less on the Walsh project, because they're not, the Walsh project is to the north of the Anderson projects that we've been talking about in recent council meetings, and it's a little more isolated from being directly next door to neighbors, so they did about a third as much notification in terms of just the numbers they did initially in submitting their application. But they did, then again, after the application was approved, offer those buildings a copy of what the actual application was, so that it could be posted for neighbors to see. And then lastly, the reasoning for denying this appeal is that the Noise Review Board is respectfully addressing this issue, and is very serious about trying to find some kind of balance. You know, obviously, we probably are doing something right, when we're hearing from the development industry that they have concerns, and we're hearing from neighbors that it may not be enough. Not sure that we're going to get to a point that we won't have that situation at the end when we bring something forward to council. But the board is definitely taking this issue seriously and trying to find ways to address it. And just as a slight clarification, when I said the issue about the garbage truck noise, what I was trying to intone and may not have effectively done is, we were going to be working on garbage truck noise, which council actually directed us the last time we brought garbage truck noise forward, to go back and look at it one more time before something was more formally approved by council, other than a handful of changes we made to garbage truck collection in the city. And so that was on our work plan for this year, and we changed our direction and have been focusing on the construction issues at heart in the Pearl that we've been talking about at council. So those are the primary reasons, again, for our asking of council to explore a denial of this appeal.
Questions? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. So, appellant.
The timeline for this particular variance was rather interesting. I also want to point out that the reason that we're here today is the result of over a year of constant struggle with the city and with construction companies, trying to just find a common ground, a level of respect. We have been through quite a bit, so with regard to this particular situation. According to Paul, Walsh notified the Noise Officer, Paul, on Friday, January 9th, about their intent to apply for a noise variance. Citizens were not told. On Wednesday, January 14th, at approximately 12:00 noon, I was notified by my office, the office in my building, that Walsh delivered notice about their application. Management was going to hand out flyers the next day about their application, but instead, at my urging, since the next day would have been after the Noise Board meeting, the office placed flyers in the mailboxes of every resident at approximately 3:00 PM that afternoon. So the Noise Board meeting was that night at 6:00 PM, that day at noon, and, excuse me, Walsh sent a note. me, Walsh sent a notice that they were applying for this variance, and my office where I live was going to hand that thing out the next day. They handed it out that day. Now, most people, if they get home from work, let's say 5:30, and they have children, they're going to see this notice in their mailbox and run out to the Noise Board meeting a half hour later. I don't, I don't think that really is a lot of notice. Gwen and I attended the meeting, and we opposed the granting of this variance. The Board Chair, with no quorum, said he didn't want Walsh to have to wait, and said that they would retroactively ratify the variance the following month. The Walsh variance was drawn up, and we got the first draft from Paul via email on Tuesday, January 20th, at 6:00 PM. Paul's email claimed, "Here is the Walsh permit that I sent over to them this evening." They had completed notification to the community on these two upcoming pours, and the Chair mentioned that as a citizen representative, he was supportive of issuing a permit during the timeframe before they could return to a full board meeting. Neighbors are also aware that there will be construction activity tomorrow. There were stipulations sent to the police and to Walsh explaining to them both how to behave if and when Gwen and I called the cops, because this all happened right after we had met with you. And so there was a lot of attention being paid into this situation. In fact, Teresa Marqueti called this period a 30-day trial period wherein which something was being tried. Walsh gave the Ramona office notice the night before the 5:00 AM concrete pour. And Walsh did a 5:00 AM concrete pour on January 21st. And I actually went and stood at the door of my building, and when people walked in and out, I said, "Do you know about the construction activity that's happening tomorrow?" And nobody did. Nobody in the building knew what was happening. After the, when it started, when the construction pour happened, we didn't call the police. What was the point? The whole thing was a ruse. After the initial pour, Paul distributed a clean version of the variance, and in that variance, there were stipulations like no Sunday work, which was never something that was going to happen anyway, and according to ordinance, shouldn't be happening. They claimed notification was met, and Kathy clarified it. However, like I said, I stood by the door, and nobody in the building knew it was happening. Paul and Eric, who is the super there, had private communications via email and phone to organize the variance activity and prevent the police from being able to stop it. Walsh distributed flyers to the Ramona to notify the residents about their application. Now, they, the interesting thing is that they distributed flyers enough to the office to give out to every single resident. And that was a stipulation in the variance, but they didn't receive the variance until after they had handed out those notifications. So how did they know that that was a stipulation that they should actually be doing? And they didn't do that same thing to alert the people of the construction pour. So, we appealed the variance because notification was not ethical and non-existent. Citizens were cut out of the decision, and decisions were made without due process. The city was not prepared to process the variance, and again opted to favor construction company over citizens. The Noise Board didn't have a quorum to vote and opted to ratify the Chair's decision at the following meeting, which they did. The notification stipulations were not fully met. Walsh still used backup beepers, although they claim otherwise. The Noise Board didn't ask pertinent questions at the hearing and failed to take into account citizen feedback, which was ongoing citizen feedback. The Noise Office and the police worked in tandem to protect the privilege of the construction company while undermining the rights of citizens. The way in which the Noise Board and the city is acting damages trust and goes against the ethical principles of Title 18. With the speed and deception of this variance approval, we didn't even have time to receive a proper appeal process because the construction activity was already carried out. If the city can't handle the noise complaints, then it should give less variances instead of facilitating unlawful behavior. And the reason we're here before you today is because we have just followed every little avenue. You know, when I first talked to a foreman who told me, "The city's never going to do anything, you know the city's never going to do anything," he instructed me to keep pursuing the matter until I talk to you, the mayor. And here I am, and I'm wondering really now who you might refer me to.
Okay, well, we have a hearing tonight, so.
That's about pile drivers, though. It's just specific to pile drivers.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor of the appeal, or if not, in opposition to the appeal?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Holt with Walsh Construction. With regard to the timeline that Mr. Venadia described, I'd sent one of my assistants down to the Noise Control Officer to apply for a variance for an early morning concrete pour, as we've done many times before. And at that time, we were told that all variance activity in the Pearl District was being handled by the Citizen Review Board. And then we were told that it was going to be meeting on the 14th. So, the reality of the whole notification of the first concrete pours is that, you know, we found out a week and a half before the 14th, or a week before the 14th, that we had to go before the board. We weren't actually on the agenda, but Paul insisted that we had to go before the board to have our variance heard. He is correct, at the time we went before the board, there was no quorum, so they kicked it back to the Noise Office. And at that time, they had described the notification that we needed to do. And my belief was is that we were in compliance with the notification requests that the Noise Officer had made. It sounds as if they don't believe that to be the case. As far as the amount of noise, the location of the site, you know, it's, again, it's progress, it's progress in the Pearl. The site is not bordered by another building. The Pearl Family Housing or the Ramona Apartments where Mr. Venadia lives is kitty corner to the southeast, or, excuse me, southwest. And the amount of noise when the concrete pumps are onsite is fairly minimal. We made an effort to stage our concrete trucks, an additional block to the west. We had Cal Portland, the concrete supplier, provide certified flaggers, disable the backup alarms, because it's a safety issue. So, we did what we could to comply with the variance, and I'm surprised to hear so much concern or so much negativity regarding it, to be honest, because I feel like we went pretty far. At the second Noise Review Board meeting, we also explained that, you know, we were going to actually use less days than we'd previously asked for, and the reason behind that was is we'd got together with our concrete superintendent and figured out a way to do one of the pours without an early start. So I recognize this is an impact to the community, but I believe we are giving our best effort to reduce our impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Johnson with Walsh Construction. I just wanted to add, talking about going above and beyond, the Monday exemption, which is a little odd, and I wouldn't recommend necessarily be a rule going forward, was in response to a particular citizen concern just in this area, just about these projects. So we've actually, we have, in addition to staying away from weekends, we've stayed away from Mondays, so we've had to either accelerate through overtime or delay pours to make that work. So we've, as Eric says, I think we've done everything we can within reason. I'm actually not a fan of turning off the backup alarms. I understand the noise improvement, but the noise is there for a reason. It's the same reason that you have alarms on garage doors, you have alarm, you know, you have train whistles and crossings, because people don't always look. So they're, we're providing flaggers, but I would say flaggers are not as good as an audible alarm for most citizens. So we have to balance the safety aspect of this. But we're fine with it. We, I think, I think it's worked fine. But it's just, there's always this sort of give and take. Folks just don't, they don't, they don't look.
Why aren't the flaggers as good as the alarms?
Oh, the flaggers can only be in one place at a time. The alarm is exactly where the, where the safety issue is. So if you have multiple trucks, the flaggers are protecting an intersection, but someone comes out of a doorway, comes out of their car, whatever, they don't control the entire street, you know, in an instant.
You don't have a flagger behind each truck that's backing up?
No, I believe that.
Well, no, there's a flagger that, there's a flagger that backs up each truck, but the, the issue is, is that, you know, an audible alarm covers more area than one person with a pair of eyes, and that's just, the reality of it is.
They can't be 360 degrees around the truck.
Okay, but they're there to stop people from being behind the truck. So if there's a person behind the truck saying, "Watch out, this truck is backing up," doesn't that do the trick?
Well, it's worked so far.
Yeah, it's worked so far.
Right.
But.
So, I have a question about the, are we on to questions?
Yes, please.
So, even if, what, I'm going to ask staff about going to the board versus the Noise Officer, but didn't you know sooner than the day before that you were needing this noise variance? Whether it was done by the board or, it just happened that the board is meeting that night, but.
No, no, we had gone to the Noise Officer, I don't know, a week or a week and a half before the pour.
Okay.
To apply for a noise variance over the counter, as we've done many times in many different jurisdictions. And at that time, we were told that we had to appear before the board on the 14th.
And why didn't you notify the neighborhood that week before that you were going to be going to the board?
I didn't know, I, I mean, I think, so, let me back up. So we went in, they told us that we would have to go before the board. Actually, they denied my assistant the variance. He came back, I had to go down and meet with them the next day, I believe, and then I found out eventually that I had to notify everybody that we were going to be at the Noise Review Board meeting. And I don't know that, I, to be honest, I don't know how many days passed between the time that I found out I had to notify people and I notified people. I think it was done in a timely manner. I mean, it's not like I was deliberately stalling.
I'm just trying, I'm not.
No, 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 I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to make it clear, you know, I, it's not like I was, there seems to be this perception that construction companies are evil entities that are out to do no good, and, I mean.
Actually, I have the perception that you know what you're doing and you plan to do it in advance, so that it would be relatively easy to tell people. I mean, you did, according to what you just told me, you went a week ahead of time to get the variance.
Yes.
So what I'm wondering, and directing staff and Noise Board folks, that maybe we need to specify that there needs to be a certain amount of notice, if it has to go through the board, I think you'd probably agree that it's not reasonable to get a notice at 3:00 in the afternoon when the.
No, I do agree. The other thing, though, would be is if I'd come in after the 14th and asked for a variance for a concrete pour on the 20th, I would have had no recourse.
Right.
Right? So I would have been delaying my construction project for two or three weeks till the next board meeting.
Do you have, would, would that have been the case, or would you, or there, is there a time?
I don't know. It didn't happen that way, fortunately, so.
No, I have not been involved in construction. So, does the pour have to be done early in the morning? Could it be done in the middle of the afternoon?
It's an all-day activity. It's a thing that takes a great deal of time to accomplish, and there are many, many factors involved.
So unless you start early, you're not going to get done by the end of the day, and that's a problem with concrete, because it sets.
Right. The start of that pour, those pours are about 5:00 AM, and they were done by 5:00 to 6:00 in the PM. So if you shifted, you're shifting it later, it doesn't, it doesn't improve things.
Especially, right, and especially in the winter when it's not.
Not going to, not going to get.
Okay, that, that helps me understand, because I wasn't understanding why you needed to start early, any day, never mind.
The other reason, and the folks from Anderson mentioned, is traffic. You know, to relieve traffic in the neighborhood, we don't want to pile up a bunch of trucks, because most of the trucks come early while the people are trying to commute. It makes for a lot of delays in the trucks getting to the site, and it equally makes delays for people trying to get out of the area. So, we try to, we try to work in lower traffic hours.
Can I ask, in the typical construction process, how much time are you likely to know in advance that you're going to do a pour? And conversely, what's an example of the least amount of time that you, what's, what's an example, under what circumstance would you need to schedule a concrete pour on a very short notice?
It's a very weather-dependent process, and it's very weather-dependent. And so this time of year, the weatherman has no idea what it's going to do three days from now. I mean, you know, you can look at three different weather websites, and they'll get.
But it's raining?
It can't do it when it's raining.
So that's like you can't paint the house when it's raining, you can't, so as, as good as your forecast, and maybe you have your favorite, favorite weather person on TV, you're still somewhat at the mercy of the, of weather.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, and then, you, you contract for this service?
Yes, we have a concrete subcontractor who builds the deck. We have, there's a great many people involved.
So at a time, currently, for example, where there's a crane on every street corner, does that mean that it's harder for you to schedule concrete pours just because of the, how much activity there is in the marketplace?
Absolutely, yeah. The availability of finishers is, it's very hard to find them. I mean, you know, you, so what we end up doing is, is we schedule a week window, and we tell the finishers, "We're going to pour in this week," and we hope and pray that there's a dry day, especially this time of year where it rains every 10 minutes. So.
And what's the, just so we know, because we don't, we're not in your business, what's an example of the worst-case scenario where you can't in a timely manner do a concrete pour, and it has some negative impact on your construction schedule? What's an example of, of the worst-case scenario, not able to do a pour within a reasonable period of time, and its impact on everything else you've got scheduled?
Well, every day, it depends on whether the concrete pour is part of the critical path of the schedule, which it usually is, which basically means that every day the concrete pour is delayed, delays the completion date of this, of the project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and so there's a cost.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's definitely a cost. And then, and then, you know, we have an obligation to the developer to deliver on time, so when the concrete pour gets delayed, then we're looking to work a Saturday to try and make up time, which costs us money, which we don't really like to do.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is, there's, there's, there's a little tension here in the system. There's the, your difficulty in scheduling certain things and not necessarily having scientific precision when you can do it, and then the dominoes, and then the public interest in wanting to get reasonable notice, and how you, how you mesh those two, and they don't always overlap.
Yeah, that's a fair assessment. I mean, you're looking to put $100,000 worth of work in place in one day. It's a, it's a risky proposition, and the last thing you want to have happen is a downpour like we had yesterday, where it hails and lightning. And this time of year, the weather is very unpredictable, so, you know, we were asked at the second Noise Review Board meeting to give a three-day window, a week in advance, and we did that for the second, or, excuse me, the third and fourth pour. We delivered notices with a three-day window to try and, to try and do what we can to notify folks. Anyway.
Just, I also want to make a comment about what you're talking about, about the alarms, alarms going off as you're backing up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I may not be typical, but I often rely more on my hearing than my sight. You know, I'll cross the street thinking, listening to see whether there's something rather than necessarily looking, and.
Sure.
I think the benefit of, for, for many people of the alarm in addition to the flagger is that if you're not in the field of sight, if you're a kid coming off the sidewalk and running, or if you're a parent with kids, or whatever situation, when you hear that noise of a, of a truck backing up, you kind of know that there's a, there's a zone of danger, a risk, even if you don't see a flagger.
Sure.
So, I mean, I know you're, you're kind of rolling the dice a little bit, saying that there's, if you're trading off the noise versus the safety issue, but I do think we all have become accustomed to when we hear that noise, that sound, it tells us that there's, there's an area of danger, and, and a child can get off the sidewalk, or a dog, or a person can get into harm's way, in my opinion, before they see a flagger.
Sure.
Or the flagger sees them.
Or vice versa, yeah.
But is the turning off of the sound, is that just until a certain time of the day, or is that, yeah?
Still after 7:00 AM, yeah.
Yeah, till after 7:00.
Up until 7:00. Because if I'm at Commissioner Fish at 5:00 in the morning, then I'm looking around myself pretty carefully to make sure that there's not something, I mean, there's all.
We've had some joggers.
All kinds of hazards.
Yeah, joggers.
They jog with music a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, the iPad, iPhone thing really gets us.
Right.
On folks just wandering.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm not working around the college on this project, but it's always texting whenever you're around the college. They're never, never looking out.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the appeal? And then let me give you an opportunity, if you want one, for rebuttal, and then we'll get staff back up.
So mayor, what, what are we rebutting?
Their, their version of why they got the variance.
So, I want to refer to another project in the neighborhood, just to give you a, no, I need to give you an understanding of, of how things work with construction. Block 15 has never asked for a variance to do a concrete pour early. It's a very large building. I don't know how they do it. I'm not a construction expert.
Where is that located?
Between Northrup and Overton and 10th and 11th. It's called the Cosmopolitan, I think.
Is it called?
The Cosmopolitan.
Okay, because it's a lot.
Next to the, to the Tanner Springs Park.
Okay, thank you.
So they've never needed a variance, and I don't know how they do that, but it's genius, and if we could only encourage all of these projects to be designed in such And if we could only encourage all of these projects to be designed in such a way that they don't need variances either, that would really help livability quite a bit. And the only way that they're going to start making those design choices that way is if they're made to understand that they're not going to get the early morning pours. So when I brought this up at the noise review board meeting, when this variance was being asked for, I was mocked. I was told, well, don't you understand? They just said they need it and it's a different project. Yeah, I get that. I get that it's a different project. But we need to start making changes so that projects are doing things like whatever it is Block fifteen did so it doesn't need an early morning variance because it is obviously possible.
Anything else?
David Venadia. At, at the noise board meeting after all of this took place, Paul said that he knew about the Walsh variance application on Friday, January ninth and the meeting was held on Wednesday, January fourteenth. Just to put that into perspective, it was just a matter of days. Eric mentioned that construction companies sort of get this rap like they're all evil. And, you know, we don't think they're evil, but what, what we do feel is that it's, that our experience has been that they're deceptive. For instance, he had said that the concrete runs out, so they have to do these concrete pours early in the morning. But when I talked to a representative at Cal Portland, they say, no, we never run out of concrete. So I, you know, and I don't know what the truth is, but I just, there are many situations like that where, where one person says one thing, another person says another thing. For instance, Tiffany said tonight that, today that, that they use a more expensive auger method. But recently, the Vice President of Hoyt Street told us that the only reason they used the auger was because it was cheaper. So we don't really know what this, what the truth is. But when we look at the list of conflicting information and which way does it lean? Does it lean toward the company's benefit or towards the citizens' benefit? We can sort of suss out what's what. The relatively quiet pour that they did is in excess of 80 DBA at the property line. So when you have a, a large concrete truck staging, that is stopped outside of your window, spewing out exhaust and, and running, it's at 80 DBA. And people in our building have children, so that's, it's a difficult situation. And I forget the other gentleman's name from Walsh who said that this is a give and take. But it's not a give and take and that's why we're here today because it's always a take, take, take. And, and it's always the citizens who have to sort of bear the brunt of progress. And we're not against progress, but we would like to see a give and take. So if they're going to show up and do with backup beepers and 80 DBA trucks and do their thing that they have to do, which we understand is a difficult and expensive process, then that week, give us some time back because we as citizens, and this includes everybody here, when a construction site pops up next to your building, unless it's Block fifteen, then you want a little give and take. So when you have your time taken, that affects your bottom line. And it's hard to put a number on that, like you can say it's a $100,000 bottom line to do a concrete pour. But over the course of several years, how many thousands of dollars are being affected in a neighborhood where there are many families and many people working? So the idea that we've presented with your task force of livable weekends, I think solves or at least is worth the trial because it, it provides a give and take. And that's what we're asking for and that's a really equitable solution. And, you know, the Portland story is all about telling the world how equitable Portland is. And we would really like to see that be enacted here in Portland.
Clarification, that what you just referred to about your proposal is what is, as Commissioner Fritz earlier said, is, is, is before the, in the legislative process? You have a, you have an idea, you've floated an idea and that's going to be reviewed?
Is it going to be reviewed?
I'm asking you.
We'll hear, we'll hear from, we'll hear from the noise review board and the staff about that.
Yeah, I haven't heard any...
Hearing or is that for the evening's hearing?
That's not for this hearing.
Yeah, as far as we know, that's just an idea that got proposed and is just out in the ether, kind of like some of the complaints. So as a citizen, the last thing I'd like to say is that, again, the fact that we're sitting here before you is, is over a year's worth of diligent and difficult work for which we have seen little results, but we have seen some little results. And so we know that, that change is possible and we're asking for your help. We're asking for you to, to do something to actually enact or live out the ethics that Title eighteen and the Portland story say and profess.
All right, thank you very much. So maybe we could get you, Paul, and David to both comment on this, this particular variance appeal and any issue it raises and then we can also ask you about some larger issues.
Yeah, I, I want to speak to the...
Put your name on the record, David.
David Sweet, Noise Review Board Chair. Yeah, the question that's been raised about notice. First of all, as Walsh Construction told you, they were not aware until they came in to get their over-the-counter variance, as they'd done many times before, that I had asked the noise office to refer all construction noise variances in the Pearl District to the board for adjudication. And I, I'm, I'm aware that that puts an extra burden on the construction companies, extra time. And in this case, they had every expectation that they could walk in and walk out with a variance.
Let me just stop you right there. Have we corrected that problem? Have, has the Office of Neighborhood Involvement now worked with Development Services to notify developers in the Pearl that they're going to need a variance?
We have not done that. We have definitely talked to the individuals who are operating actively right now in the Pearl and as the cash and carry gets started, we'll reach out to them. One of the big challenges, which is not necessarily on the plate right now is that there is definitely disconnect insofar as I think what the citizens are bringing to the table is a request to have better understanding of when projects are happening. We're only going to know about those projects in the noise office if they're actually asking to vary from normal construction hours. So it, it would definitely be a great dialogue that I could sit down with Claire or one of the other folks in your office and figure out how to best...
Well, I'm just thinking it should be put in the plans examiner, for example. So if you could get the information with that, that current directive to Ross Carone in the Bureau of Development Services, we can make sure, you know, not everybody reads the plans examiner, but it's good to have. I appreciate that you've had individual contact with developers you know about. In general, in development services, if we've changed a protocol, we try to get it out to everybody so that they're more aware. Sorry to interrupt, please continue.
Thank you. Good suggestions. We'll follow up. So in this case, we did ask Walsh to come to our January fourteenth meeting because it was an opportunity for people to hear what was going to happen and to comment. Although we told them we would not be able to make a decision on their variance at the January meeting because there had not been sufficient time for notification and the decision would be postponed to the February meeting. So Walsh ended up having to show up for two noise review board meetings to get their variance. Two of the pours that they anticipated doing were scheduled to happen before our February meeting. And in that case, I authorized the noise control officer to issue those variances on, on the base of the, under the conditions that we had set and...
Did you clarify that?
Yes.
It's not in code as to...
No, it's not in code. What is in code is that the chair of the noise review board decides which variances have come before the board and which are decided by the noise control office. And just this past winter, when we were hearing so many complaints about construction noise in the Pearl, I thought it best to bring those before a citizen board rather than have the single noise control officer catching all the flack on these and let, let the board make those, make those calls and, and take the necessary abuse about them. So I, I don't, I don't see that, I don't know that any of our decisions would have been different, but it does give us an opportunity to hear from, to do notification, to hear from citizens about these proposed variances and to talk about how they can be done more quietly for, for the neighborhood. And that's, that's what we've tried to do. So in, in this instance, we heard from Mr. Venadia that he suggested that variances be limited so that they didn't happen, the, the early starts didn't happen on Saturday, Sunday, or Monday. And so we, after conversation with the contractor, we did that with the, with the exception that if there was steady rain and Monday looked like a clear day, we understood that that may have to happen. So it, it, I think, I think the process has given us an opportunity to improve, to improve our decisions and to be more supportive of the community.
And two, two other quick clarifications. The issue of not having backup beepers has been a long... I held one in the noise office even before I started at the city and that's one that we have to very carefully coordinate with OSHA. So every year, every several years, I give OSHA a call and make sure they haven't changed their delineation that we're in a comfortable position to require using flaggers instead of an audible or visible flashing alarm. And they have traditionally been fine with that. And if they tell us at some point they feel that's no longer a safe procedure, then we're obviously going to immediately for the, the city's protection and citizens' protection if it's not safe, stop using that protocol. So we do that only in the nighttime hours, usually starting nine thirty at night at the earliest and then going till the 7:00 AM hour. Occasionally on Sunday, if somebody's working, we might carry that till nine or so in the morning to let someone not have backup beepers too early on a Sunday.
So what's, going back to notice, what's the standard amount of notice before a meeting that is, is, is a standard in the code? Is you have, you must notify seven days before the meeting or whatever?
It's, it's not in the code, but I feel that notice has to be mailed at least two weeks before a meeting in order to allow people to actually attend.
So that might be something to add to your list of amendments to specify that. Obviously, you might need to have some kind of emergency, but I would imagine that most companies know that, they may not know the particular day because of the weather, but they know they're going to be doing a pour sometime between, you know, first of January and thirtieth of October or something. Is there a limit on the, the length of time? No, because the last one we had was for a whole year, right?
The, technically within the board's policies and procedures, I can only review up to a year of work. Anything where someone's doing a big TriMet project, a bridge renovation, a combined sewer overflow, those would go to the noise review board when they're multi-year projects.
But a, an experienced developer would be able to come in a month ahead of time saying, I'd like a variance for sometime between these months. And you would give a variance for, you know, three days or five days, whatever it is. And then what's the notification to the neighbors that, hey, it's going to happen tomorrow or next week? What's, what are the requirements for that?
It's, it's not unusual, well, when, when it's a variance that's being heard by the board...
No, once the variance has been granted, but it's not for a date certain. It's for, you know, pick three days out of three months.
And that's something that the board will often require as a condition of the variance that we'd like the contractor to give notification to. And this is specific to the Pearl District. Give notification to the surrounding properties with a window of when these pours are going to occur.
Are they ever required just to give a 24-hour notice that it's going to be tomorrow?
Depends on the project. Sometimes with ODOT, they're actually doing multiple notifications, warning months ahead of time. It really just depends on the extent of the project. We deal with such a broad spectrum of projects that if you have a static project like the Hawthorne renovation, then you're going to keep regular communication with the hotels who are close by. If it's a moving project like ODOT, you're re-notifying because you're hitting a neighborhood for a month or two and then moving and hitting the next neighborhood. So it's not, there's not a, an extremely delineated set notification because each project really brings a different set of parameters and impacts to the community. It really just depends on what the applicant's asking to do.
Paul, can I ask you a question? Because it just...
Can I just finish one follow-up question? So what they're specifically asking to do is the concrete pour. And they've been given permission with the variance that's duly notified. Yes, you can do three within this window. Are they then required to notice around in the Pearl it's going to be tomorrow or not?
Well, what we, not currently, not in every single project currently, but what we're trying to do in the Pearl is add the condition because it is dense and there's a lot of projects happening. The issue we heard of re-notifying within a three-day window. So if they don't know it's going to be Monday, but they really want to try and get it in Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, then they're going to re-notify folks and say, these are the three days we're trying to get it to happen, which is not perfect.
That's currently in the standards?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Fish.
No, just as curious, and this, this is slightly outside the scope of the issue, but you mentioned something and so, you know, I'm in charge of the Bureau of Environmental Services. We're, we're being told by some neighborhoods that given the option of spending, say, three months on a project or doing work in the evenings where it can be compressed and get it done in a month, that residents and neighbors and businesses are saying, get it done. So we're running, you know, odd hours. But I'm guessing that creates another set of challenges around people who are concerned about the noise. And does that, is that, is that beginning, does that add additional burden on, on you with people that even though we've got that sort of green light to go that way, that when, when they actually have to sort of deal with the consequences, maybe have some buyer's remorse?
Yeah, so interestingly, for the Bureau of Environmental Services, Water Bureau, and P-Bot, with the rapid changes in the city and how dense we're becoming, many practices they followed for years, not really consistently pulling noise variances, probably weren't a concern when the city wasn't as dense, but we're hearing a lot more concerns because they are trying to figure out how can we get this work done in a timely fashion? And in some cases, as you mentioned, it may be most logical to just work 24 hours a day for an entire weekend, for a week, and get it over with.
Or even if it's not as logical, if, if that's the overwhelming desire of the community to get it done in a quicker period of time, we'll try to accommodate. But you're saying that, without, of course, referring to my bureaus, you're talking about P-Bot and not pulling variances. You're saying that we're not always consistent in pulling, in pulling a variance for those evening jobs?
I, I would respectfully say unfortunately, we're trying hard right now in the noise office to figure out the best way to help our city agencies to get up to speed a little better.
So that's not within the scope of this, but since I've got two of those bureaus and Steve has a third, maybe Commissioner Novick, the three of us could give a meeting? And, because we're, we're, we're trying to bring as much customer service friendliness to this process, but if the, if we're hearing that people want to do it in a compressed period of time, but that then is generating noise issues, I want to make sure we're getting both sides right.
And interestingly, in the deliberations we had on Cesar Chavez for a project, that was one of the things the board tried to examine very closely is, can we actually try to knock this work out quicker and is that a benefit to the community? And we heard a dialogue from the neighbors and came up with a balance that I think incorporated some of that in the dialogue.
Thank you.
So can you illuminate just a little bit more for my sake or anyone else here? Ms. Simel, Mr. Venadia, where are we in your, in your process of considering a revised code? You've got this hearing tonight on pile driving. What, what's in the offing in terms of changes? And how might people that care about this, other than in appeals hearings, get involved?
Yes, so tonight's hearing, we're focused on pile driving as we have been since October when we took up the issue. And so we are trying to come up with some appropriate code changes on pile driving. At the same time, there's a couple of other things that we'd like to do. So one, one of those is to acknowledge that the mixed-use zones project is going to change all EX zones to mixed-use zones and commercial mixed-use and that that in turn will bring about a change in the noise code. So in anticipation of that, we thought we'd reclassify the central employment zone, EX, as a commercial zone at this point and give some immediate relief to residences in those zones. And it will in fact reduce the permitted sound level at the property line, as you, as you pointed out. So that's one, one additional thing that we are trying to do. It won't change the impact of construction noise between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. It will change what's, what can happen on a construction light, site between 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM the following morning and on Sundays to, to a lower, tighter, more protective standard.
Yeah.
I think that's going to cause problems for the EX-owned properties in the Central East side.
I, the, the EX zones in the Central East side are mostly along Martin Luther King Boulevard, as I see that, and Grand Avenue. And I'm not, I'm not certain that that's going to cause any problems given the mix of businesses there. I think, I think it's probably appropriate. And what I'm told from the Planning Bureau is that is in fact what's going to happen ultimately through the comprehensive plan process.
I think the council has something to say about that.
I think it does as well.
Public hearing process.
Yeah. Separate issue, I think anyone on the Central East Side has a bigger noise problem than construction.
Beyond, beyond that, Mr. Mayor, we are proposing to add a procedure to the noise review board policies and procedures, which would allow us to designate a noise impact zone and to consider how variances for construction activity within those construction noise impact zones would be handled in the future.
Some kind of cumulative impact approach.
Yes, and we looked at whether a code change to that effect was, was really appropriate. The fact is, we're not receiving an overwhelming number of reports of noise problems in South Waterfront, on Williams Avenue, on Division Street, on other places where there's been fairly intense local construction activity. It seems to be, I, I think that doing some kind of blanket code change to say, if, if there are more than X number of construction sites within Y distance, that that's a construction noise impact zone, I think that may be overkill. I think right now we're focused on the area where we're hearing that there really is a problem, that people do have a large number of concerns, and that's, that's why we are and have been treating construction variances in the Pearl differently.
I, I received a lot of complaints about Division, so just so you know.
About the construction noise specifically?
Yes.
Okay, I, I wasn't aware.
I think not everybody is aware of the noise board and that that's the place to complain, so the natural place is the council, and so that, that is, I'm here to tell you, that is a problem. And I actually would support your exploring the noise impact zone as a more fine tool, as a more fine-grained way to look at noise impacts, rather than changing EX to commercial, which might have impacts, because you're right, the, the noise in the East Side is not construction noise, but it's noise that's now allowed in the EX zone. So noise is noise according to the noise code, right?
Yeah.
So I think something that's a little more specific would probably be a better tool.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Other questions, instructions? Thank you both. Okay, do we have a motion on this appeal? On the second appeal?
I move to deny the appeal, mostly because the variance is moot, it's done.
Yep. Second. Any other discussion? Roll call on that vote.
Fish?
I really appreciate, Mayor, the conversation we just had, and we've had a number of these hearings. We didn't have any of these, we had no hearings like this for a period of time, and now we've had a bunch, and I think it's helped raise our awareness of the issues and deepen our understanding of where there might be some code changes to both add additional protections for citizens, but frankly, make your job easier in administering this, this code. So thank you all for this. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I think as these two appeals point out, we have an issue in the Pearl District that it looks like the noise control board and the noise control officer are conducting a process. It's not going to lead to something perhaps as, well, certainly not going to deal with the appeal right in front of us now, but I am optimistic that your, your understanding of the problems are there, and we need to deal with them. And actually, as Commissioner Fritz just said, it may be beyond the Pearl District, but that certainly is the one that captures the most attention right now. Aye.
Novick?
I think that the noise control board and office have a very tough job, because they think that people's solutions would vary considerably depending on their personal predilections. Like, I personally would, wouldn't mind having noise constantly from 10:00 AM to midnight on the weekends, and from 7:30 AM to 11:00 on the, on the weekdays, because they may, I mostly care about sleeping in the, early in, in the weekend's late mornings. But my views aren't going to be other people's views, so I think you have, and also, as Commissioner Fish is pointing out, there's some people would rather have, get it all done within a month and do whatever it takes, and others are going to say, "Well, stretch it out to avoid annoying me at certain times." So I think you've got a very difficult job, and I appreciate the hard work you do to try to balance those concerns and the concerns of, as people have said, progress versus annoyance. So thank you very much for your continued service. I wish you well. Aye.
Fritz?
So often in, or usually in quasi-judicial procedures, we don't focus very much on notice. In this particular case, you brought some very good issues to our attention about the mechanisms of notification, both before and after the notice, the notice is given. So I appreciate that very much, and now that we're aware of it, the proper way to fix it is through the noise board and then bringing a, a package of legislative changes to us, which you, of course, are welcome to come back and tell us about. These two appeals and the one, the previous ones also highlight that probably the council is not the best appeal body for noise variances, simply because of the timeframe. It takes probably six weeks to get on the council agenda, even if you're on, even if you're lucky. And, you know, here it is, where April 1st in this particular variance was January 21st and February 7th. So it's frustrating for citizens to get to council and find, "Well, it's moot because it's gone past, and, you know, thank you for the information." We want to make sure that appeals are held, are heard by the board in a timely manner. And I don't want to lose the option or the opportunity for citizens to come to council to bring issues to our attention outside of particular appeals. And so I'm hoping that the package that the noise board will forward to us will have an annual report to council, at which citizens can come forward and say how things are going, what, what needs to be done in further legislative changes, because it's just not appropriate to make legislative changes as part of a quasi-judicial hearing. We need to have everybody involved, and frankly, you having a certain amount of time to speak here, us having the last word up here, that's not the best way to come together to find a package that has board consensus. The, the process that I hope that will be happening at the noise, noise board is the way to do that, and then we're the final adjudicators and tweak it at the end. So thank you for your attention to this, I really appreciate it. And thanks to the noise board and the noise officer. Aye.
Hale?
Yeah, I want to second all of Commissioner Fritz's comments. Not only is it not appropriate for us to make legislative changes in a quasi-judicial appeal hearing, it's not legal. You know, we can't do it. But I appreciate the fact that you've raised these issues, and it is true that people can come to this council regardless of what door they come through, whether it's a, an appeal hearing or speaking on the, on the council communications items or showing up for something else and raise an issue and eventually get it addressed. Maybe not as quickly as some people would like, particularly if it's an issue like noise in your neighborhood. So I have to plead for patience a little bit, just because it is government, it takes a while. But my, my plea would be, continue to talk with us and with particularly these citizen volunteers, Mr. Sweet and others. We actually, by happenstance, reappointed two more citizens to this board this morning, people that volunteer their time to spend a lot of time trying to figure this out. But I, I have high expectations for that discussion, because it usually, between neighborhoods and business, often between neighborhoods and development, we figure out a solution, and we, I think we have the ability to do that. So we need to continue to try to look at the code and look at the process. I agree with the point you made about timely hearings. We're not providing them. So there's improvements to be made here in both what the code says and how we administer it. I hope you'll continue to talk with, with Paul and with David and members of the board, and let's continue to work on these issues. But again, the appeal on an addition, on an additional, an individual, sorry, I'll speak correctly, an individual case, particularly when it's now moot, is an awkward forum to try to fix the problem, but thank you for raising the problem that needs to be fixed. Aye. Okay, and we are adjourned until tomorrow at, when we become a budget committee in the afternoon at 2:00 PM.